We're still waiting on. Okay, thank you, Kyra.
I'm actually going to switch devices so whoever's monitoring the waiting room, it won't look strange that another Alan Younger is logging in.
Okay. So we have 10 of the commission members, we're only missing one. Oh, there's, looks like Ms. Hines just joined. Hello, how are you?
All right, Courtney, are we good to go?
I think so. I think we'll go ahead and start and Michael Stover will let anybody in if he sees in the waiting room. So yeah, we'll go ahead.
Perfect. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 11th, 2020 Zoom meeting of the Utilities Commission. I'm calling the meeting to order on behalf of everyone and after Patrice reads the role, as you remember, she's going to call out everyone's name and we respond with here or present. Then we'll have some more welcome and announcements and then head into our meeting. Ms. Glenn?
Hi, hello, everybody. Good afternoon.
Hello.
Hello, Patrice.
We're going to call the role for the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utility Commission. This is May's regular meeting. Commissioner Randall Tuttle, Chairman Randall Tuttle.
Present.
Commissioner Wesley Curtis.
Present.
Commissioner Harold Day.
Harold.
Commissioner Harold Day.
Unmuted.
I'm here.
Okay. Commissioner Tom Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Yvonne Hines.
Here.
Commissioner you, again.
Present.
Commissioner Duane Long.
Present.
Commissioner Chris Parker.
Present.
Commissioner James Ruffin.
Present.
Commissioner Donald Stewart.
Present.
And Commissioner Alan Younger.
Alan, unmuted.
Commissioner Alan Younger.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Okay, I'm muted. Good afternoon again, everyone. A couple of announcements and then discussion about today. Mr. Ruffin, would you like to say anything about your plans?
Sorry, I zigged when I should have zagged on that button. Yeah, I do. And thank you, Chairman Tuttle. I have served on the Utility Commission for a full term of three years and the opportunity came up for me to join the Wildlife Resource Commission, which I had done. It's an appointment by the governor and I'm very excited about it. But with that corresponding with the rotating, the ability to rotate off of this, I felt like it was in the best interest of the Utility Commission and the Wildlife Resource Commission that I only do one or the other and not both. And so I am not renewing my term or rotate, I'm rotating off of my term. And I have to say, one of the reasons it made me feel a little bit better about that or a lot better about that is the quality of the staff we have. Courtney and her group were just outstanding and I, Courtney, really after three years being in there and one with the previous director who was very good, I have to say, but you are equally, if not better, as the Utility Commission's leader. So really appreciate that. And then also the group of folks we have on this board made me, this commission, excuse me, made me feel a whole lot better. And I think that we're in more than capable hands and I have no doubt that we will continue to function very well and serve the residents of Winston-Salem, myself being one, for many years to come. And I'm just thankful for the opportunity to serve. It's been a wonderful experience and, you know, if I was to ever get asked to get in to serve on this commission and I had the time, I would certainly do it. It's just been great. And I just really want to appreciate all the encouragement, I guess, if you will, from folks when I told them I wasn't going to come back on. They understood the decision quite well. And Randall, I particularly want to thank you for your leadership and all you've done on the years I've been on this commission. But thank you all very much.
Well, thank you. Jim, thank you. And I am really sad to see you go. Courtney and I were just talking recently about not only the way you carry yourself, but also your experience and your mindset will be a big loss for the commission. But we are sad to see you go, but excited about that new opportunity. I've got some announcements about the committee chairs, but I wanted to open the floor to anyone that, because I'm not sure we'll be together. So Jim will serve through the June meeting, but I believe resuming again in June. So I didn't know if any of the commission members wanted to say anything today. And we don't want to have all 10 of us rain praise on Jim. That would get a little obnoxious. So you can either write him a note or say something at the next meeting. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I just didn't know if anyone had anything to say right now.
This is Alan. It took me a second to get off mute. I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure serving with you, Jim, both on the commission and the Finance Committee in particular. Wish you well.
Like you, Alan.
This is Duane. I hope I'm audible. I want to thank you too, Jim. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Well, Duane, it's been a pleasure working with you too and thank you. And you're one of the reasons why I feel comfortable about where this board is going, you and Alan both. Actually, all of you.
And Wesley is using the chatroom to rain praise in that way so you can have that as an option as well.
And Jim, this is Chris. I'd like to thank you for your leadership on finance. You've been a real calming presence. And as Randall said, apparently you were trained very well because you were able to get through all the motions in a very timely manner.
Yep, that's critical to that position.
Well, thank you for everyone and that is an applicable segue because I've asked Chris Parker to succeed, Jim, as, excuse me, Chair of the Finance Committee. And so we have one more or two more sessions for Chris to learn the expedient reading of motions. And then to replace Chris and Ops, Hugh Jernigan is going to take that role. So I think we would all, I'd like to ask you to share a welcome to both of these folks, Parker and Jernigan, for their new roles, as we also say goodbye to Jim after the next meeting. Any, let's see, one more announcement before I turn it over to Courtney. We have the agenda items as you see in your Agenda 11, counting the approval of amendments. We're going to go over each of these in turn and we have two ways to do this. We can vote on them as we go and that will require a roll call vote for each and every one. Or what I would like to suggest is that we do a consent agenda, but when we go over each item, let me and the staff know if you want to pull that item. So we might have one or two pulled, which we can tackle with individual votes at the end, but then we would do the balance as a consent agenda. Is that second option okay with everyone?
I much prefer it.
Okay, I see some thumbs up, so I can't see everybody, so.
Yes, second option.
Cool. Okay, with that, let me turn it over to Ms. Drabber.
Okay, good afternoon, commission members. One of, just a few reminders before we get started. So just remember to mute yourself so we can limit any background noises. And then obviously you need to unmute yourselves if you have, if you have a question. One of the other requirements of virtual meetings is that obviously we do the roll call for the board members, but I also need to announce the staff that's on the call, so I will do that now before I get into my other announcements. We have Damon DuKane, Assistant City Manager, Mike Quivisto, Deputy Utilities Director, Jan McHargue, Assistant Utilities Director, Mike Stover, Assistant Utilities Director, Patrice Glenn, Recording Secretary, Lisa Saunders, Chief Financial Officer, Jerry Bates, Purchasing Director, Marilena Jensen-Guthold, Assistant City Attorney, Heather Curry, Budget Analyst, Shane Chu-Huffman, CIP Engineer, Todd Lewis, Senior Civil Engineer, Planner-Review, Carter Boyd and Gail Kettler, part of our communications team, Jakira Westbrook, Office of Business Inclusion and Advancement, and Kurt Buerling, Real Estate Administrator. I think I got everybody that was, that was on this call. If I didn't, you can let me know. Okay, another announcement that I wanted to just go over with the Utility Commission is that right now the city of Winston-Salem is working on restoration plans for each department. So I've been focused on the utilities restoration plan and what that looks like. We're going to be phasing back in staff, you know, how do we phase back in staff? Allowing people that have been teleworking and continue to telework, you know, let them continue doing that. Where do we need additional protection measures installed? For example, with our customer service area, we are going to be installing Plexiglas shields in front of their areas to keep separation between them and the public. We'll be putting markers on the floor to make sure if there's a line, there'll be six feet, six feet of separation. We're also looking at staggering people coming back into the office, looking at when an employee should be wearing a face mask. When is it required? When is, when is it okay not to have a face mask on? Obviously procuring a lot of cleaning supplies, disinfectant wipes and things of that nature. So that's one thing we're working on right now. They tentatively, we're looking at possibly open back up city facilities. So Stuart Hall, Bryce Stewart Building and then City Hall, excuse me, coinciding with Phase Two. Nothing's been, you know, there's no, there's not been an official date set, but we're looking at possibly opening those buildings back up when we reach Phase Two. Any questions on, on that or on any of those plans that we're making?
Hey Courtney, have you moved or when is the office moved to the Bryce Stewart Building?
So we have not moved yet and there's, there's got to be a series of events that happens before we move. So the COVID-19 crisis has put a delay on any of those plans, but transportation, which is currently on the third floor, has to move to Union Station. And then the Planning Department, which is currently on the second floor, will move to the third floor where transportation vacated and then we will move to the second floor. So tentatively, we had planned on doing that by the end of this calendar year, but with everything going on, that will probably be pushed back a little bit. It might take us a little bit longer than that. Any other questions? Next thing I wanted to announce is, as Mr. Tuttle mentioned earlier, our next meeting will be June 8th. We will go ahead and have another virtual meeting, so it will be Zoom. I anticipate that in June, we are, around June 8th, we will be in Phase Two. So I just wanted to go ahead and put it out there that we'll just go ahead and have that one virtually as well. We will start it at 1:00 PM as we have done in the past. Any, any questions on that? Okay, with that, I am going to share my screen and Mike Quivisto is going to go over the agenda items. Can everyone see the agenda page? Okay, good. Mike?
You all right?
Yes.
Well, there we go. Thank you, Courtney. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to walk through the agenda items. The first number, item number two is Operations Item. It is consideration of a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement regarding proposed sanitary sewer improvements to be installed within a development. There's one developer agreement for sewer for a total of $30,200. I'll pause at the end of each item to give anyone time to ask questions. All right, not hearing any, I'll move on to item three, which is the First Finance Item. Consideration of a resolution authorizing acquisition of easements by deed or condemnation for the Water Main Improvements Project. This project entails water system improvements to increase fire flows and eliminate dead end lines in Louisville, Clements and Kernersville. And also includes replacing two two-inch lines in Winston-Salem that lack hydrants and have a history of low pressure and failures. To meet the schedule for this project and ensure that access is available when needed, the attached resolution authorizes the acquisition of easements in the amount of $119,825. Staff recommends approval. Okay, item four is consideration of a resolution approving purchase orders for sole source vendors. This is an annual item that we bring before the commission where staff is requesting approval for purchase orders to vendors for parts, repairs and maintenance of products used in utility operations that are only available through the authorized distributor or by the manufacturer of the product. These purchase orders will cover the period of July 1st, 2020, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, and be awarded to each vendor based on historical spending data for the, for a total of $4,392,300. Staff recommends approval. Item five is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for fire hydrant replacements. This contract will replace 282 fire hydrants. It includes related work for valves, paving, obtaining GIS coordinates, et cetera. Bids were received April 24th with Ramey, Inc. coming in as the low bidder in the amount of $1,568,200. Ramey agreed to the subcontracting goals established for this project of 1% minority and 1% woman-owned businesses. Staff recommends approval of a contract to Ramey, Inc. in the amount of $1,568,200 for the hydrant replacements and the engineer's estimate was $1.5 million.
Mike, if I, this is Chris, if I could ask, 282 fire hydrants, are we projecting ahead for needs as well or is this a backlog?
I believe it's a backlog, but I'll let Shang or Mike Stover chime in on that.
Yes, I think, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Shang.
Yeah, I think previously we had a backlog of over 200, so most of this would be the backlog.
So what do we normally have in a year?
It varies, but we, we've done a couple of change orders on the previous hydrant replacement contract, as you're aware. And it seems like every six months, we have roughly 200 hydrants in a backlog. So we're catching that backlog up and then we're projecting another 80-some hydrants. We'll have the ability to do.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is Harold Day. Can you hear me?
Yes, Harold.
We can hear you.
Yeah, I talked to the Fire Marshal this morning and he said 282 would put us up just about equal, even with them right now and that would be good if we could get those done.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to item six, which is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for water line improvements along Turfwood Drive, Faculty Drive, Dunleith Avenue and Wood Street. This project includes a replacement of undersized water lines along Turfwood Drive, Dunleith Avenue and Wood Street. And also includes work along Faculty Drive to separate public water users from Wake Forest University's private water system. Bids were received April 3rd with Charles D. Lauter, Inc., the low bidder for a total of $1,340,811. The bids included alternates for either an open cut installation or Jack and Boar installation at Turfwood and the associated side streets. Charles D. Lauter, Inc. has agreed to the subcontract goals established for this project, which are 8% minority and 6% woman-owned businesses. Staff recommends approval of a contract to Charles D. Lauter, Inc. in the base bid amount of $616,136 plus alternate number one in the amount of $724,675 for a total award amount of $1,340,811 and that $70,000 be available for contingency if needed. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1,418,287. All right, item seven, consideration of a resolution approving a change order with Ramey, Inc. for the Old Salem Rehabilitation Project. The Old Salem Rehabilitation Project was approved as part of the city Winston-Salem's 2014 bond referendum and the initial project area included state, streetscape improvements along Main Street and Old Salem. A condition assessment of water sewer lines determined that the existing infrastructure in that area was in poor condition and in need of rehabilitation prior to the street improvements. On December 11th, 2017, the commission approved an amount of $2,958,603 for the water and sewer infrastructure improvement portion of the Old Salem Rehabilitation Project. Construction started in April 20th, 2018 and is scheduled to be completed in May of 2021. During the course of construction, the Winston-Salem Department of Transportation expanded the scope of the Old Salem Rehabilitation Project to include additional streets, including Church and Salt Streets, along with the connecting streets in between. A condition assessment of the water and sewer lines in these streets determined that the existing infrastructure was also in poor condition and in need of rehabilitation. Staff recommends a change order for replacement or rehabilitation of an additional 2,860 linear feet of water and sewer lines in the amount of $767,077 to cover the cost of this additional work. Item eight, consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for pump repairs at Idol's Pump Station. A request for proposals was issued on February 11th, 2020 for the installation of a spare pump at Idol's Pump Station. The pump and associated parts were previously acquired by the Utilities Department and will be provided to this selected vendor to be installed. Two proposals were received and staff evaluated them based on cost, location of business, qualifications and experience and reference verification. Due to the specialized nature of this work, bidders were allowed to self-perform without the utilization of MWPE firms. After the evaluation of the proposals, one proposal was rejected due to the vendor not including information related to its qualifications. Staff thus assigned a top score to Charles R. Underwood, Inc. of Sanford, NC and recommends that a purchase order be awarded to Charles R. Underwood, Inc. in the total amount not to exceed $184,900. Okay, the next three items.
Sorry, can we back up to number, item number seven?
Yeah.
I was just curious, is the, is the completion date for that still looking to be May 2021?
Yes, that's the latest.
Okay, because I just happened to be by the other day. They're working like gangbusters, it looks like.
Yeah, they're currently on Main and Cemetery Street today.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, the next three items are planning and policy items with the first being the solid waste budget item and I'll turn it over to Jan for a brief review of that one.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Good afternoon, everyone. Courtney, do you want to advance slides? Thank you. We've spoken about the budget in some detail over the last two meetings, so we're just going to give you a really brief update of some of the summary items related to the budget. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to ask at, at any point or at the end, either one. This table shows you an overview of the solid waste capital budget and there's only one project that has an active or an appropriation requested this year. That's the Haynes Landfill Facility Upgrade Project. We're requesting $1,676,060 for that project and it's primarily related to the renovation of the maintenance facility at Haynes Landfill. So that's the total appropriation requested for next year. Over the seven-year period that's shown on this slide, the total anticipated appropriations are $18,932,060. So moving on to the operating budget, this is an overview of the expenditure side of the budget. The total request is for $11,539,480. That's almost a 1%. It's a 0.96% increase over the current year's budget. Personnel increases by 2.6% to just over 2.5 million. Supplies and services make up the greatest part of the budget and they increase by 2.9% to just over 6 million. County recycling programs increased 4.25% to $1,0850. Debt service, that's the repayment on our bond obligations. They decreased by 8.6% to $826,100. And the North Carolina Municipal Leasing Corporation obligations, that's the entity that we finance our equipment purchases through. That request is a decrease of 7.3% to $1,121,720. So that's the expenditure side of the budget. Revenues are budgeted at $13,622,810. That's a 6.5% increase over the current year's budget. Most of that is made up of revenue from our tipping fees at our four facilities and we're seeing an increase in tonnage, which translates to a 7.5% increase in those tipping fees. Intergovernmental revenues are proceeds we get from the solid waste disposal tax and the scrap tire tax. We're seeing an increase there of 2.5% to $810,000. Transfers then are from Forsyth County and from the water, wastewater and stormwater funds for our recycling programs. That's an increase of 3% to $830,820. Resource recovery is revenue that we see from the sale of recyclables and landfill gas. We're budgeting a decrease in that item due to the volatile and relatively poor market conditions for recyclable commodities that we're seeing. And we should also note that there's no rate increase proposed at any of our facilities. So that's the quick summary of the solid waste budget item.
All right. I'll go ahead and talk about the water and wastewater budget for FY '21. On the capital side of things, we're requesting 38.5 million for FY '21 appropriations. You can see that the majority of that is in the water distribution and wastewater collection area as are most of the requested projections for, in the planning years. The totally anticipated appropriations through FY '26 are $294,150,000. On the, on our requested expenditure summary sheet, you can see at the very bottom, we're looking at a 0.43% increase for our overall budget. On the personnel side, up on the top row, there's a 2.16% increase. That's primarily due to three additional positions for the Cross Connection Control Program and benefits for retirement and healthcare. Supplies and services are up 3.57% due to charges from the city Winston-Salem IS Department, operational electrical service, chemicals, being that the big drivers there. Our equipment lease payments are down slightly, not requesting a lot of equipment replacements for FY '21. Our debt service is down due to refinancing of our existing debt in the current year. State loans are going up slightly as we continue to repay those. Transfers to solid waste remain the same and transfers to general fund also remain the same. On the revenue side, just wanted to give you a quick glance at where we think we're going to end up for FY '20. Where, as you can see on the watered sewer side, watered sewer lines there, we've got a reduction based on anticipated decrease in consumption over the last two months of the fiscal year. We're not meeting the budget for system development fees. This was our first year of budgeting. That specific revenue, and we'll be more conservative moving forward based on what we're seeing this year. Late fees and penalties, we had collected about $2 million before the governor's executive order. order, which prohibits us from charging late fee, currently prohibits us from charging late fees. So we're looking at about a $5.1 million shortfall from our budgeted revenues for FY ' And then for FY '21, we're, I guess the big point here is we're not, not going to propose a rate increase. You can see the water and sewer revenues are decreased based on, based on consumption and anticipated decrease in consumption due to the impacts of the coronavirus pandemic. System development fees are being based on actual revenue from the current year. We're not planning to budget any late fees or penalties, as we do not know when we'll be able to start charging those again, which overall result in about a 7.67% decrease in our budgeted revenues for FY '21. So for some additional context, what does that mean? For, for our overall budget, if you look on the far right and the far right-hand column, see our total expenditures for FY '21 are $92.5 million. Our budgeted revenues are $111 million. We've got about $18.5 million going into our capital reserve. That's what we're projecting for FY '21. Our estimate for the end of year '20 is currently $25 million going into our capital reserve. And for reference, the first column there, FY '19, we actually put in $26.5 million into our capital reserve, and that's what we use primarily to help fund our Pago capital So just for some more additional information, the top, the top row with cash and investments, that number there is supposed to remain higher than that of the second row, which is our financial policy target, where we're supposed to have one times our operating and debt service expenses. So as you can see, starting in FY '22, we dipped slightly below our financial target for several years before rebounding in FY '25. This, this model right here includes an 8% revenue increase in FY '22 and FY '23. We'll be evaluating those numbers as we move through FY '21 and evaluate the economic landscape and its impact on our financial situation. And the bottom call, bottom row there is our revenue bonded debt, and we do have some debt issuances coming up at the end of '21 and in '23. You can see those numbers going up slightly there. So that leads into our debt coverage ratio, which for those of you who have been around for a while and know we've been trying to get to this two, this 2.0, and so we're, right now, we're projecting that we're going to make it this year. Based on what we're anticipating for our budget next year, we'll dip below that down to right, kind of a 1.75-ish figure for FY '21, and hopefully get back up to over two in FY '23 and stay there in FY '24. Bottom line is, the impact of no rate increase for FY '21 on our financial models, there, we're in a very strong financial position to withstand a reduction in revenues and monthly collections. I mentioned we're projecting revenue increases of 8% in FY '22 and '23 to replenish cash reserves to meet the financial policy, but we will be closely monitoring our expenditures and revenues during the upcoming year to update assumptions and forecasts as more information becomes available. If there are no additional questions, we'll turn back to the regular agenda, which, and item number 11, which is consideration of a resolution requesting MWBE goals to be set below the 10% minimum goal for the check valve installation, Cap Street, Dove Street and Ada Avenue project. This project includes installation of new check valves to address low water pressure in the Old Rural Hall Road and Akron Drive area. After reviewing the scope of work and cost estimate, a minimal amount of erosion control and hauling work exists for potential subcontracting opportunities, and it's the recommendation of the city's internal MWBE committee that the MWBE participation goals be set at 2% MBE and 1% WBE for this project. And if there are no further questions, that is the end of the, the agenda, or briefing on the agenda for today's meeting.
Hey, Mike, I do have a question on that last one.
Okay.
And, and I noticed when we were going over Agenda Item Number Five, which is the fire hydrant, Agenda Item from Ramey, it said that Ramey agreed to 1% and 1% goals. So I'm just curious when, how that goal was set at 1 and, and our normal goals are at 10 and 10. And why does this project, Agenda Item Number 11, require a commission vote when others don't?
Well, we, we actually took, brought the hydrant item to the MWBE piece for that.
Okay, so we did that, we did that previously.
Correct.
Okay, cool. That was, that was the answer to the question then, thanks.
Yeah, we did that one, yes. Or I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Tuttle, we can, I had something happen with the PDF, I'm trying to pull it back up, but now we can get a motion to approve the items.
Yeah, may I ask first, does anybody have any of the items 1 through 11 they'd like to pull from the consent agenda and vote separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
No approval of consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Second.
And that was done.
Wesley.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Items 1 through 11 via consent agenda. Any discussion? I believe we have to do a roll call vote, is that correct, Ms. Lynn?
Yes, that is correct. Mr. Tuttle, I think you, you need to.
Oh, I do the roll call vote?
Yes.
Ah, okay, so I can't vote, that's, that's really, that's good. Mr. Curtis, yea or nay?
Yea.
One second, please. Mr. Day, yea or nay?
Can you hear me?
We got you now.
Yes, I, I've got reserves about all of it, but I will say with reserves, no.
You voted no?
That's correct.
On all 11 items, just confirming?
Yes, all items.
Okay. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Ruffin?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
I, I guess I have some reserve on the budget items, but I don't know what kind, what discussion would change anything as far as making any changes. So, and saying that, I, I will go yes, but I do have reserves on the budget items.
Thank you. Mr. Younger?
Yay.
Okay, the consent agenda passes, and thank you all, and I'll turn it back, I guess, to discussion around AMI.
Yeah, I will, let me share the screen again.
Yep. Yep, I'll try.
And then Mike, I'll turn it back over to Mike Quivista.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. So we've been building up to this and wanted to give you all an update on where we are with our AMI Advanced Metering Infrastructure Program. We received four responses on December 17th, 2019. Two were deemed non-responsive and rejected, which left us with two still very strong proposals. We conducted shortlist interviews with the two vendors and selected Census as our preferred vendor. Why we selected them, they had a lower capital and 20-year cost. Their network provides a platform for us to become a smart utility with pressure monitoring, wastewater flow monitoring, leak detection, a lot of great optional efficiency and operational measures for us. They guarantee their water meter accuracy for 20 years. They're an industry leader in water AMI systems. And as many of you may recall, we're the only large utility in North Carolina that's still manually reading meters. Durham, Raleigh, Greensboro and Charlotte have all had AMR or the drive-by process for years. Most of them are looking to go to AMI now, and to date, in the state, Census has deployed the largest AMI systems that are, that are in use in Cary, Fayetteville, Brunswick County and Union County. So we're currently finalizing the statement of work and contract terms with Census. Right now, the capital cost for the project look like they're going to total right around $36 million. That's $26.7 million for the meters, $7.4 million for installation, and about $1.9 million for the upfront software and professional services associated with that. As, and as we've also mentioned recently, we have added money to our distribution system improvements program over the past several years and projected that out in the CIP, knowing that we have, we've tackled the collection system very heavily the past several years, but knowing we have work to do on the distribution system. So part of what we want to do while we're out here touching these 130,000 meters is to replace any related pertinences, adjust and replace meter boxes and lids, and bring all of these installations up to our current utility standards. So we've, the installation contractor gave us some very, very good pricing to help us get ahead of some of those distribution system improvements while they're out there changing out these meters. So 6.2 million of this would come out of the distribution system project to help fund those upgrades. And then we're also, we also, from an, from an operating standpoint, we're going to do, we're looking to do the whole network as a service and software as a service. We're still working through these pieces. These will basically be our operating costs. They'll be phased in as the meters are installed. Census will install the network and maintain it for 20 years, guaranteeing a 99% read rate. Otherwise, we're, we're responsible for taking care of all that. This really provides us with a lot of risk mitigation tied to the contractual obligation for performance year over year, and lessens our constraints and enables us to focus on our core, our core competencies. So we'll have more information on that piece when we bring, hopefully, the item to you next month, which what we're planning to do, as Courtney mentioned last meeting, we really want to keep momentum rolling on this project. Been working really hard to get to this point, and what we're, what we're looking to bring next month would be a master products and services agreement, where we would do $5 million for an initial deployment, which would start in July of 2020, which would be installation of about 10,000 meters and implementing of the systems and the integration of the initial systems. And this actually, this $5 million, this initial deployment dovetails very nicely with how we were planning to do the project anyway, to the item that we would bring would only obligate the utility to that $5 million. We would bring a PO for that $5 million or bring a contract for, we would ask you all to authorize a PO for $5 million next month, so we could get the initial implementation going. And then probably 10 to 12 months later, we would look to do, begin the full deployment, which we're anticipating would take another 24 months, and we'd be monitoring the economic and financial situation to determine if we want to take off another bite for a year or try to do a PO for the remaining amount. So we're really close. We feel really good about the proposal that we received and the negotiations that we've been under for the statement of work and the contract, and our staff is excited, and so just wanted to give you all a heads up on where, on where we were and what we're looking to bring next month, knowing the environment that we're in currently. So I'll open that up to questions.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the time to ask questions before we see a formal item next month, so I think staff would like to hear any concerns or thoughts that we might have.
Just wanted to get the numbers right here. We, initially, we set aside $50 million, then it seems like we went to $55 million total for the project. Where, where are we here in terms of what we think the total AMI project will cost out?
So that's an excellent question, Mr. Wong. We've, we've spent right now about $10 million, or we've encumbered about $10 million. Some of that was spent on our initial AMR project, the systems, the systems integration piece for the enterprise integration platform, and then also the project, the program manager utilawork that we've hired to help us with this project. So the, the capital cost of 36 million is what we would be basically contributing to the, paying the remainder, we'd be using the, the remaining 39.2 million in the project to cover those capital costs. And then the remaining will be having some operating costs that'll start probably in FY '22, associated with the network as a service and software as a service, and those will ramp up based on the number of meters that we deploy moving forward.
So, so are we at 50 or 55 million when we add all that together?
From a capital side, we'll be, we would be right under $50 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, that was a really long and convoluted way of telling you that.
Any, any other questions on, on the AMI program and our plans to bring, to bring an item next month?
So the item next month is going to be for 5 million?
Correct, Mr. Parker. It will be, basically, we're going to bring the master services agreement, which will lock us in for pricing and everything moving forward, but yes, we will only be issuing a PO for approximately $5 million to do the initial deployment. And any additional costs, we would come back to you all for an additional purchase order to authorize any ongoing, any further installations.
So in this one, you're projecting about 10,000 meters?
Yeah.
So what do we have remaining?
So that'd be about 125-ish after that.
And it's roughly $500 a meter, if you do the math?
If you, which, for which piece?
Well, I'm just dividing 10,000 by 5 million.
Okay, well, that, so the initial deployment will also include the software part, the software, some of the software pieces, the professional services, so there are some upfront, it's, it's a little more heavily loaded on the integration and those types of things for the initial deployment than the first 5 million.
Okay, so the remaining 125,000 would be less per meter then?
Could you repeat that? Sorry.
Right. So the remaining 125,000 meters?
Mm-hmm.
The math would come out to be a little less than 500 a meter.
Okay, I haven't done that math, but that, that sounds about right.
Have we ever got a price on the infrastructure and all these meter frequencies?
Could you repeat that, Mr. Day? Sorry.
I've never seen a price on all the receivers for this system.
Okay, so what we're planning to do now is have, is, whereas initially, four years ago, when we talked about doing this, we were talking about purchasing and installing and maintaining all of the network hardware associated with this project, and based on what we've seen and what we've learned, we would much rather have, excuse me, Census manage that moving forward. So they are going to install all of the hardware and maintain it and guarantee the, our read rate over the course of 20 years.
So, so this price includes all the receiver fiber optic and everything else associated?
Those pieces will be spread out over, from an operating side over the course of the 20 years and ramp up as we, based on the number of, of meters. and ramp up as we, based on the number of meters and endpoints that we install. So we'll have more information on that part of it for you next month.
Okay, my next question though, is this project something we could put on the back burner for four to six months?
So let me take that one. Mr. Day, so one reason why we want to bring you something in June that's smaller than the initial contract amount. We had initially proposed to bring you the full contract is to keep us moving on this project because we see a huge benefit to having the AMI system in place, but also to be a little conservative and not jump into a large contract when there are some uncertainties going on. So we feel, and as Lisa mentioned in our operations budget workshop, that we are financially sound and we think we can weather this storm. But we do want to be a little bit conservative with moving forward with any really large project. So we are recommending to the utility commission that we do move forward with AMI project. Just, we're trying to move it forward in smaller pieces, just to make us all feel more comfortable.
So, Mr. Day, what's your concern?
My concern is, is the country right now, we got so many people out of work, and we're not forgiven, but we deferred water bills. And talk on the street is, and a lot of people know about this, 50 million or whatever kind of means we're going to spend on water meters, they're working right now. And I think as commissioner, I cannot vote for anything to spend any major money until we get leveled out, say where we're going. The meters are working, we got in the ground now. I just, I have a bad feeling about all of it. I think I'm the oldest member on the board, but I've never seen nothing like where we're at. And I just think we need to conserve every dollar we got and not finance anything right now that we don't really need. As long as we're reading the meters, let's read them. That's my concern.
Thank you.
What I'd like to say is I think this is staff's approach to be conservative, and I think each commissioner can choose whether they agree with that. But rather than bringing the whole kit and bootle, this is a crawl, walk, run, or a smaller step toward the same program. What I'd like to suggest for next time is just a confirmation of what we originally thought about and where our expenses are projected now. And especially if we are going to turn some, what was going to be capital cost into operating cost, which I think you said is the whole system that Sensus will do, let's do a breakout of that. And I understand perfectly, from a headache point of view, why you want to do that. But you know, my math was showing that we were actually going to spend less than we thought. But if that's because we're turning things into operating cost versus capital cost, let's review that. Any other commission members have questions or concerns? And thank you for this good discussion, by the way.
So again, remind me, I think the goal too was, once this, once the system's fully implemented, that the persons that were normally reading meters are just going to be reassigned. Is that right?
Correct. Those, Mr. Curtis, no one will be losing their job or anything. They'll be either, will potentially deal with positions through attrition or reassignment as we go through this three-year-plus process.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any idea as to the percentage of persons who are not paying their utility bills regularly? Is there a large percentage of folk who are taking advantage of the deferment of the penalties or are pretty much receiving bills on time?
Ms. Hines, based on the most recent numbers we have from April, it looks like our uncollected bills are going up slightly. The situation we're in, billing every 60 days, that information is kind of slow to trickle in for us. So we're closely monitoring that. But we are anticipating an uptick in the ability of the utility to collect our revenue. And we've had conversations with Lisa Saunders, our chief financial officer, for how we're going to address those and monitor those. But as noted, we feel like we're in a strong financial position. If we have some cash flow, a reduction in cash flow based on our ability to collect, we feel like we're in a good enough position to weather that for a significant period of time. Hopefully, that answered your question.
Ms. Hines, I'll add to that also. We are having to report to the North Carolina Utility Commission the amount. And I don't have that information off the top of my head. I'm reviewing every week, I just haven't committed it to memory. But it gives us the information about how many people we are not disconnecting that we would have disconnected. So yes, there are some accounts that would have been disconnected that have otherwise not been. We can prepare a more detailed report for the utility commission, if that's something that you wish to see.
Courtney, I think I would like to see a more condensed report.
Okay. You know, I'll add too, like I said earlier, we obviously find that there's a huge benefit in the AMI program, which is why we do want to keep moving it forward. Obviously, it's a big project. And we are moving forward with being a little bit more conservative. I also want to try to keep in mind that, you know, issuing construction projects also helps the economy keep the construction moving. So while I understand that we have to be very reserved and conservative with what we spend and watching our revenues closely, us doing work does help the economy as well.
Chairman Tuttle and Courtney, I'd like to add a few words on that too, on the AMI project. You know, this is an unprecedented crisis. I think Commissioner Day is dead spot on. It's unprecedented by anybody's lifetime for sure, if not in all time. That being said, it is a crisis that's going to pass. And we have to operate with that in mind, that this will not be here forever. Now, things might change, but we are still going to continue on like any other crisis that's ever happened. With that in mind, I think it's imperative that we continue to do business to extent that we can. And this measured approach of implementing the AMI, I think is a very wise and appropriate approach. I think your point that it does stimulate the economy is a good one. But I think more importantly, it keeps us operating. We can't just stand in place and shut down because that will be the end of everything. And so I think it is, again, important to continue. Also, I think that the long-term benefits of this AMI system coming in are tremendous, and we can't delay it any more than we're going to have to as a result of this crisis. So my thought is, let's keep going, do it measured, do it responsibly, just like you guys have been doing, Courtney, which has been excellent. And I think that in the end, the citizens of Winston-Salem and Fife County will benefit from our ability to move forward on a measured basis.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts?
I'd like to second Mr. Ruffin's comments. We are in a really interesting situation right now. And I think we, I know the staff's been working on it, but we do have a executive order that requires us to do program reporting for utilities. And is that due tomorrow?
So they've, Mike, help me remember, they have ways, we were having to report on that weekly. And then they have dropped that reporting requirement to maybe monthly. And I believe we don't have to report again until June. Is that correct, Mike?
I believe that's correct.
Is that a difficult process to be doing, or does that take a lot of staff time?
For us, it actually is not. I know from other utilities, feedback that I've received, other utilities are having to write queries with their billing system, and it's a little bit more difficult. But our billing manager is able to pull the information that we need fairly easily. So we've been reporting it weekly.
Thank you.
Okay, should we go on to more updates, please?
Yes, we will keep moving. Mike Stover is going to give us an update on the water and wastewater information.
Good afternoon, everybody. Month of April, actually, calendar year-to-date, we've had 17 conveyance permits totaling a value of about $1.6 million. We added this graph a couple of months back showing the mileage of water and sewer from year to year. So calendar year-to-date, almost four miles of water mains have been permitted, and about three miles of sewer mains have been permitted. The month of April, we had 6.33 inches of rain. There's no county in the state of North Carolina under drought conditions. Here's the water production chart. You can tell our production from April of 2020 is down, 1.2 MGD from April of 2019. It's about a 3.4% decrease. And we're slightly below the five-year average, so hopefully we'll be back up next month. Water production, this is fiscal year-to-date. You can tell we're having a good year overall. We're above the five-year average and we're above the last, the previous three years combined. And here's a chart of the water and wastewater revenues. We were projecting the budget about $100 million through April, and we are right at 99 million. As Mike, we used to said earlier, we bill every two months. So the true impact of the COVID-19 crisis, we haven't seen yet. But we should start seeing that impact next month or two. Water quality sampling, at our three water treatment plants, we took over 26,000 samples in the month of April, and we filled 32 water quality calls out in the distribution system. And we had zero violations at any of our plants. Collection system update, we recently received the January report. We had zero NOVs and zero intended force. February, if you recall, we had several SSOs. We got the SSO report with six NOVs. They didn't give us any intended force loaders for those. Several of those were heavy weather rain events. And we've not received the reports from March or April yet. Here's the SSO count per 100-mile chart. Right now, we're on pace to finish historically low. We are well below 2019 and 2018. So we'll cross our fingers and hopefully have a good month in May and June and set a new record. Here's the SSO chart by aggregated cause. Gail Kettler with our communications team, she recently kicked off the No Wipes and Pipes campaign. We have seen an uptick in fog, roots, and debris-related SSOs. You can see in April, we had eight out of our nine SSOs were O and N-related. And then the other pipe failure SSO was related to an air release valve failure on our ready force main. Here's our cleaning production graph. We are well in exceedance of our monthly permit cleaning requirement of 10%. We are slightly below our scheduled cleaning goal of 23%. There are several factors that go into that, one of which is the crisis, the current crisis. We've cut our staff and the alternating schedule. So roughly, we've cut our available workforce in half. So half would work one week and the other half would work the following week. Our surge cleaning contractors have also seen that impact as well. There was a couple of our contractors that, early in the crisis, pulled off and sent their folks back home because they were worried they couldn't get home as they're out of state. They've returned, but we are trying to close that gap before the end of the fiscal year. Any questions on any water shore updates?
I just wanted to ask, are the wipes making very much impact on our issues we're having?
Yes, we've seen an uptick. We can't quantify that right now, but you could tell for the month of April, eight of our nine SSOs were related to O and N debris. I don't know if all eight of those were wipes. They get bundled into the same category, but we definitely have seen an uptick in wipes and debris.
Also, I wanted to thank Gail for taking up that issue and getting word out to the public. Thank you, Gail.
And one more question, Mike or Courtney. I've commented to several people that just because the marketing on a product says flushable does not necessarily mean it's good for our pipes. So I guess it's really hard for people's mindset to change. I'm not telling them to ignore the marketing of different companies, but it's important that we educate ourselves on what is good and what is not good for our pipes.
Thank you.
Yes, that's absolutely right, and thank you for doing some marketing for us and education. If there are no other questions, then we'll go ahead and turn it back over to Jan to give some solid waste updates.
Okay, thank you, Courtney. I'm going to start out with our usual tonnage updates. You can go ahead and advance that. And then I've got a few more slides that illustrate, sorry, I just meant to the first one. Then I have a few more slides to illustrate some of the impacts we're observing from the pandemic and the stay-at-home orders. At Haynesville Road Landfill, we are at 223,399 tons for the year-to-date. So that puts us a little bit ahead of last year and about 8% ahead of the budget target for period 10. In April, we did see waste decline. We took in 20,583 tons. So you can see that it was a little bit low, but not as low as we were, say, in February of this year. Old Salisbury Road Landfill, where we take in construction and demolition debris, we also saw a decrease in April. We've taken in 45,083 tons year-to-date. So we, going into April, we were pretty significantly ahead of the budget. So we've actually already exceeded the year-end budgeted total of 42,829. So to try to quantify some of the impacts we're seeing in the month of April, we looked at April of 2020 and compared it to April of 2019 with respect to the three parameters that you see on this table. So we looked at customer trips, tonnage, and revenue. And at Haynesville Landfill, we saw an increase of about 15% in customer trips, but at the same time, a decrease in tonnage and revenue of 9% and 8%, respectively. At Old Salisbury Road Landfill, we've seen a decrease across the board in trips and in tonnage and in revenue. And at the yardway sites, we've observed, from a percentage basis, the most significant increases in trips and decreases in revenue at that site. So overall, we've seen an increase of 14% and So overall, we've seen an increase of 14% and decreases in tonnage and revenue of around 13%. And just as a reminder, the bulky item, yard cart, and brush collection routes were suspended during the month of April, and we waived some of the, the fees that we charge at our yard waste sites. So looking at revenue itself a little bit more deeply, I've subtitled the landfills at the top part of this table because that's the revenue that funds most of our programs. So at Haynes, we decreased by about $50,251 or almost 8%. Old Salisbury Road landfill was a decrease of around 4%. Overall, from those two sites, the decrease is about $63,617 year-over-year. At the yard waste sites, we lost our biggest customer basically in sanitation's yard cart and brush collection. So it was not surprising that we saw a pretty big decline, $68,000 at that point. And the information on customer trips on the left side of this slide is the same that you saw before, so that's overall customer trips. At those sites were increased almost 18% to almost 15,000 trips. On the right side of the slide, you see only the flat-rate trips. So when we say flat rate, we mean cars, SUVs, pickups, minivans, the smaller vehicles that represent residential collections, residential customers. So at Haynes, we saw a decrease there of almost 50% to 3,560 trips, and at the yard waste sites, over a 2,000% increase. I think last year, we had 61 trips, so we don't get very many of those flat-rate customers at all. But this year, with the fees waived, we saw 1,449. And again, this is because customers are self-hauling, either because their service was suspended or because they're staying at home and generating more waste by cleaning up their yards and garages and that type of thing. And I think lastly, we just have a summary slide. We, we did see this decrease of 13% in our revenue in April, but we went into April in a relatively strong position. So overall, our year-to-date tip fee revenue, revenue is still about 8% ahead of the, the budget target for this point in the year. What happens in the next couple of months will determine the year-end results. When and if these collections restart, that'll make a difference, but probably more significantly, the commercial waste generation will, will tell the tale as to whether we meet our, our targets or not for the year. That's where most of our tonnage and revenues is coming from. So we also saw some impacts that are harder to quantify. There were very long lines at our facilities, which causes a lot of stress on both our employees and on the customers who have to wait in those lines. There were traffic impacts on Haynesville Road, and we've had some increased concerns about safety. We've not had any accidents or injuries, but with all this increased activity and more residential users, we are extra vigilant, I guess you'd say, about, about safety. So I think that's everything we had to present. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to discuss that further.
Thanks again to the staff at these sites because that is a, it is a lot of traffic. I've heard from other meetings that the other facilities and other counties are in pretty much the same situation, and they're just having a lot of, lot more people coming in for those small trips. But thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Hugh, and I think all, all of us will agree with that, Jan. Please pass that on to your staff, especially those that are dealing with 2,000-plus increases, 2,000% plus increases.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I have a question sort of similar to this, but also from prior for, for Lisa. So Lisa, are you there? I can't think you're on.
Yes, I'm here.
So Ms. Hines asked earlier, and, and basically, the, the thought was a revenue loss question, and this is more water sewer than solid waste. But, you know, if people don't pay their bills on time, are we losing revenue or cash? And my thought would be it'd be cash, and we only lose revenue if we write things off. But, but how are we handling that difference?
That is correct. We, we look annually at what our uncollectible amounts are. So we'd be take, we take a snapshot in time at the end of every fiscal year, and we adjust our allowance for uncollectibles, which affects the revenue at the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, if people are slower to pay, that is going to affect our cash on a monthly basis, but it's, it's really too soon to know at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
Answer your question, I hope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and I'm wondering if there's any, if there's any parallel in the solid waste because all of Jan's revenue analysis always talks about tons. And, and so if I'm thinking about yard waste and C and D waste, we might be taking tons in and, and, and giving it away. So how, does that, does that make, does my question make sense? I'm not sure for yard waste, that visits or tons or whatnot helps us with revenue, unfortunately, the last couple of months.
Might. I don't, I think you're correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions for solid waste, and Jan, I will turn it over to Shane, who's going to wrap us up with a capital project update.
Thank you, Courtney. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Hope you're all doing well. Oh, sorry, sat too close. Okay. So this first project is the Muddy Creek Consolidated Pump Station. Unfortunately, our estimated final completion date was, is now January of 2021. They are still installing pipe, mechanical, and electrical equipment in the headquarters building, and operator and mechanic training are still getting scheduled. Here is a picture of the process room. These are the top, the three bar screens. There's a spot on the left for fourth bar screen for future plant expansion. For Idles Row Lift Station, this project is on schedule and on budget and should be completed summer of this year. So they've erected the prefabricated electrical building. They've, they're installing valves and piping at the vault, and the generator concrete pad and the generator has been installed. So here you can see a picture of the prefabricated electrical building in the back. It's the, the redish-orangey-brown looking thing, and the generator concrete ba- pad and the ballast and the generator. Kerner Smell Lift Station, here we have one of our newer projects. The notice to proceed was January of, of this year. So far, they've concreted, completed the concrete valve vault, and the generator concrete ba- pad has been poured. So to the left, you can see them pouring the new generator concrete pad, and to the right is the cast-in-place concrete valve vault that's been installed. South Fork Three, this project is also on schedule and on budget. The, all of the borings have been complete, and they're currently installing the 54-inch gravity sewer line, and they should be down to the, to South Main Street by the end of the month. So here is the progress map. You can see the green is all the 54-inch gravity line that's been installed, and the yellow that's getting, that's towards South Main Street is what should be completed by the end of this month. Roswell Lift Station, this is another one of our new projects. The notice to proceed was February of this year and should be completed by February of next year. The new lift station, state lift station wet well excavation is underway, and the easement has been partially cleared, and they're installing the erosion control measures. So here is the progress map. So the yellow line at the very top is where they're currently working, and the red is everything that's remaining. And here you can see the picture where they're installing the prefabricated concrete wet well. They're lowering it. And here is a picture of the easement being cleared, and they're getting ready to install the silt, silt fence. So for Muddy Creek Elitch Rehab Project, this project should be completed sometime this year. The HVAC work has been completed, and the electrical work is still ongoing. They've completed the new polymer feed system at the Elitch plant. And here you can see a picture of the gravity, gravity thickener tank. To the left is before they installed, completely installed the mechanism, and to the right is a picture showing the mechanism being, after it's been installed, and now they're prepping the old floor grout to be, to start pouring the new grout. And here is the old Salem pro- progress map. They're right now working on a 16-inch water main at the intersection of Main and Cemetery. That work should be completed by the end of the week, so there's detour set up for that right now. They're also going to be working on completing the water lines at the West Academy Street. I'm sorry, they've, they've completed the water lines at West Academy Street, and then they'll be, the next thing they'll be working on will be the 16-inch valve replacement and the 4-inch water main abandonment at Cemetery and Liberty, Liberty Street. Is that for me? Any questions?
Thank you. So, Mr. Tuttle, that, that's, that concludes our presentation and all the business that we wanted to get through today, so I'll turn it over to you and see if there's anything else you'd like to discuss.
Nothing for me, but I'd open the floor for any of the commission members if they have any comments or thoughts. Hearing none or seeing no one fumbling for their mute, I would like to say that in this unprecedented times, we've done a lot of work over the last couple of months. And so it feels odd to say that we will not get together again before another normal monthly meeting. So it's a, congratulations to the staff for all the wonderful budget work. I think Wesley said it last time, this is, ended up being, other than no lunch, and, and although Mr. Griffin doesn't like it, this is a very effective way to do the budgets and, and, and take, and you, and your team, Courtney, and everyone on this call has done a great job of taking a really difficult situation. And at least from our view, at least from my view, that duck is paddling calmly across the surface of the water, and we do not see the furious feet down below the water and all the stuff that's, that it took to make, make the last couple of months successful. Again, one more call for anybody to make any comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
I was just getting ready to ask Mr. Day for a motion. Mr. Day, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead. All right, that would be a motion in a second. All those in favor of adjourning, let's all, in response, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, as noted, well done, everyone. I hope you have a great, great week this week.
Thank you, you too.